Call to order.
So, good afternoon, everyone. We are going to start with the Trades and Staffing Reserve Audit Discussion. So, my name is Esther Ko. I'm the Auditor General. Today, I am with our Senior Auditor here, Danielle Moore. Some of you may have met Danielle before and some maybe not. She is our auditor responsible to conduct this audit. So, just for everyone's background, this audit report has been presented to the Audit Committee on the March 27th meeting. And the Audit Committee suggests us to discuss it with the full school board because of the relevant topics. So, that's why we are here. So, with that, I would like to say that in BODA, you see there are two documents. One document is the full report, and then another document is a two-page summary, which kind of include the why we are doing it, the summary of the findings and observations, and next steps. So, with that, I would like to give the time to Danielle to walk us through the document.
Good afternoon, everyone. OAG performed this audit in accordance with the FY 2019 approved audit plan that was approved by the school board. The purpose of this audit was to evaluate the trades and staffing reserves methods used across SFCPS to manage allocated resources. The audit scope period covered July 1st, 2016 through October 31st, 2018, which was a 28-month scope period. The objectives of the audit was to understand and determine compliance with related policies, regulations, and procedures, determine trend information on the practice of reallocating funds and positions, analyzing trends in the use of trades and staffing reserve amongst schools and departments, and assess the design and operating effectiveness of internal control to meet objectives. Please note that the scope of this audit did not include assessing the effectiveness of individual trades made by a school or department. As a result of this audit, we identified three audit findings. The first audit finding related to the effectiveness of the current staffing methods. We found that the current staffing methods for budgeting and allocating staff may not be the most effective measure to ensure schools and departments are adequately staffed and meet the current business needs of SFCPS as over 1,000 trade requests are processed each year. This increased the workload for talent acquisition and management, as well as the Office of Budget Services. In addition, the Trades and Staffing Reserve helped to supplement actual staffing needs not met with the budgeting methods and current staffing formula. Our second finding dealt with the efficiencies of the trade request and authorization process. We found inefficiencies with the completion of the reallocation request form, and also reallocation request forms are routed manually and all requests are not being tracked. Reallocation request forms for schools did not align with the current process, and we also noted that reallocation request forms were not properly completed by a requester and/or approver. Our third finding dealt with the clarity of Regulation 5135. We noted that clarity needs to be provided as far as to further explain trades related to school-based technology specialists, trades that cross funds and/or sub-funds, and trades for positions from the staffing reserve. OAG also noted an observation associated with potential challenges that may arise when trading across position and non-position funds. In addition, OAG performed an analysis on trades and staffing reserve usage. Our first analysis is the chart on the left-hand side. During the 28-month period, we know that there was a total of 3,667 trades, which was about 85% of the trades were requested at the school level, and 15% of the trades were requested by departments. Trades at the school level were between instructional staffing allocations and other areas such as textbooks, instructional supplies, and non-instructional staffing. Trades at the department level were between positions such as school-based and non-school-based, office supplies, and other departmental expenditure allocations. On the chart on the right-hand side, this is an analysis of the staffing reserve, and we reveal that for the past two fiscal years, staffing reserve positions have mostly been allocated when enrollment exceeds projections, which is the formula, and when addressing large class size. As far as our recommendations, our main recommendations to TAM and OBS were to collaborate to reduce the volume of trades, including continuous analysis of repetitive trades and developing a methodology to update the staffing standards. Also, consider automating the trade and request authorization process, as well as consider making the necessary updates to the Regulation 5135. And I'll pass it over to management so they can talk more about their corrective actions as related to our recommendations.
We concur with the recommendations of the audit report. I mean, as far as, you know, the staffing standards, we started, we began our analysis of staffing standards for this fiscal '20 budget, for the fiscal '20 budget, and we're going to continue that over the, you know, future years so that we review all of the staffing standards, and that's a key part of this. We also will generate an annual report as far as to monitor the volume of trades of schools and departments. And this year, we began the conversion of department trades when they are a one-to-one trade for one position for another, which is, you know, essentially a title change. As far as finding, too, the efficiencies in the trades request and the authorization process, we have a work group that has been convened to develop an automated trades process, and that will allow program managers the ability to complete a trades form online, attach or provide a justification, and route the requests through the appropriate levels of review electronically. And this will replace the current process, which is manual on paper, and we hope to have that completed this year. The last one is the regulation that needs to be updated, and we are in the process of updating that to align with current practices and to provide clarity for users. So, we're in agreement with the changes that need to be made as far as the trades process go, but I do think it's important to say that, you know, everybody, I don't know, always gets the sense that when people mention trades, they think of that in a negative light, and it's not a negative thing. It provides needed flexibility to the schools to meet the individual needs of their school. One size often doesn't fit all, and the trades process, which the regulation went into effect since, in 1998, so this is not a new thing. It's something we've been doing, I guess, for 20 years. And that coupled with departments, I guess, not having added any non-school-based staffing. In fact, if you look at our total staffing 10 years ago and now for non-school-based, we're 174 positions down. Well, at the same time, the demands and expectations have certainly grown during that time period without an increase in non-school-based staff. I mean, I get that, you know, instruction's the main thing, schools are the main thing. In times of tight resources, you know, if you have to pick amongst competing alternatives, the schools rightly should be the ones that win. But the trades process and the number of positions that are being traded or non-salary funds being traded are a result of the workload in the departments and a lack of additional staff.
So, with that, any questions from you all?
I have several board members who wanted to speak to the report and certainly take other names as needed, but I do hope, Ms. Ko, that in addition to the report, I know one of the distinctions is usually that there's findings and then there's observations, and so I do want to make sure before we conclude that we're capturing up any other guidance that we could benefit from your office about how we can get to better practices in this area related to staffing trades, because I know that we had extensive conversation about that among the Audit Committee in terms of not just your findings in the report. So, anyway, I have on deck as of now Karen Corbett Sanders, followed by Pat Hines, Janie Strauss, and then Karen Kies-Gamara.
Thank you, and thank you very much for doing this audit. As many of my colleagues know, this was an issue that I raised a couple of years ago initially and was thrilled when you took this on as an audit subject. A couple of questions, and I want to address Ms. Burden's comment about the need for flexibility. I fully support the need for flexibility and appreciate it, but we also want to ensure that we have accountability and just oversight as appropriate. And so, I think that this balance is created in your report. Do have a couple of questions. Questions include the, and I apologize, it's my birthday and people are calling stop.[683.12][683.12](Laughter). So, I will turn off my phone.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Karen. Happy birthday to you.[706.28][706.28](Applause).
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Wasn't why I announced it, but okay. Couple of questions, though, real quick. Yes, we have live stream, yes. I see that there are 3,667 trades. It would be helpful, 3,667 trades, what percentage of those trades are for additional human resources versus trades for textbooks and computer equipment and things like that? And I'm sure it's in here, I just, I must have missed it. The second question I have is regarding your chart on page 10 in the report for staffing reserve usage, and I appreciate that very, breaking it out. And I see that there is a substantial increase between 2017 and 2018, just incremental between 2016 and 2017, but between 2017 and 2018, there's a significant increase for special ed trades. And so, if we could have a bit more detail on that and whether those trades were for IAs versus some other use?
Your first question, 3,667, which I think you're on page six, represents three years' worth of trades. That's '16, '17, and '18 all added together, and so many of those are the same trades just for three years. So, it's really more like about 1,200 a year.
Total trades being 1,200 per year or 1,200 personnel trades and then trades for others?
That's total number of FTEs. The, my sense is that the trades are, and I can look this up, they're almost all for positions. It's rarely that we, are we trading salary money for non-instructional?
I appreciate that, but I actually am hoping that the Auditor General can give us a little more detail since it's her report. Thank you.
So, the 3,667 on the summary is the 28-month period. How many trades occur? So, yeah, a little bit, yeah. And then, we, indeed, we have done more analysis, Karen, on the back of the appendix. We're starting on page six. So, on page six, you can actually see the trades by fiscal year, and that the total add up to 3,667. So, you can see the breakdown between schools and departments, and then you can also see the breakdown by fiscal year. So, it's the orange and the blue horizontal pie chart. And then, the following pages, it started to explain about the trades, school trades in and out, and department trading in and out by categories. So, on page seven, I just want to make sure everyone is on that page before I move on, that you can see that for school mostly is teachers trading in and as well as teachers trading out. So, here it has more analysis about the details, the nature of these trades.
So, am I correct in seeing that there are more trading in of IAs than trading out of IAs, it looks like? And then, if you look at page six, I appreciate very much that there was a over 30% decrease in trades between 2018 and 2019, and it would be helpful to understand what prompted that?
Yeah, so, good observation. 2019, I believe, it doesn't capture the entire fiscal year 2019 yet because we're still in the middle of it. So, I think it may be it's captured?
Through October 31st, 2018.
Right, but then we did, we need to notice that most of the trades did happen in the beginning of the fiscal year. So, I think it captured most of the trades, but not all the trades for 2019. So, I think for years-to-years comparison, 2017 compared to 2018 will be more comparable.
My concern is that we actually increased trades between 2017 and 2018, or they're about even. And so, I think the, from a transparency in budgeting, we want the flexibility, but we don't want to see it as a way of bypassing the budgeting process. And given that I'm almost out of time, I will congratulate you again on an excellent report and tell you that I fully support all of your recommendations. Thank you.
Great. I next have Ms. Hines, followed by Ms. Strauss.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. The, it makes sense that your analysis of this would be about efficiency, right? And the recommendations make sense, and I'm glad to see that staff is going to follow up on them. I always, though, I think the community always has a question when we talk about trades of equity, and I don't know if I'm, you know, out in left field on this. I understand that it's maybe not something that the Auditor General would take on, but I think the question that arises is with trades, if you can trade things for teachers, then you have the challenge of wealthy parent communities being able to support things because they are allowed to do that, but they're not allowed to pay for teachers. And so, what happens is principals are able to trade things that parents pay for for teachers, and there is an inequity there. And I just wonder if that came up in your analysis at all, or if it's a question we still have to address?
So, this is not part of the kind of audit scope that we looked at, but throughout the review, I think the key highlights of this audit, we see that we really need to make adjustments to our existing staffing reserve, a staffing formula model, the school-based staffing formula model. And secondly, that for the non-school-based departmental staff, we are always using baseline budget accounting, meaning for whatever agreed upon budget for the previous years will carry forward, no matter the changes in our students and enrollment size. So, I would encourage that once we got the chance, like Ms. Burden mentioned, that we looked at the staffing formula and then also looked at the actual needs of the departments, and then the school board can really looked at what are the remaining trades that are happening. And then, I think now we are coming to the same ground that, hey, those trades are indeed trades that we should look closer at. Are they really met the need of the students or have any equity issues there? For right now, I feel like that the trades are happening, some of them are really, really legitimate and need because of the lack of change in our staffing formula and the baseline budget accounting. But once that has been handled, then you can look at the true trades that are happening, and I think we can do more meaningful analysis on them.
So, thank you, and I'll finish up. I mean, maybe that's a follow-on audit that we want to do. I'm not talking about a question for today, but maybe for a future audit, where, do you think we can get down to the detail of, okay, there was a trade at this school of, you know, textbooks and materials for a teacher, and so we find how many places that happens where principals have traded out materials for teachers, and then sort of cross-reference that with the, you know, median family income of that, or our FRM status, or that sort of thing, just to see if the worry that people have is actually realized at the ground level?
I think we can explore that. Right now, the trades are pretty a manual process right now, so you hear us, the finding to is more to make it more efficient. So, I think once it is in a computerized system and we can, you know, do the analysis easier rather than manual assessment, I think that would be the time that we can do those type of deep-dive analysis.
All Ms. Hines? Great, thank you. All right, Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Kies-Gamara.
Thank you. Just a little bit of history back when trades were basically seen as a way of creating enough flexibility. It was to meet the whole issue of school-based staffing, school-based management, school-based budgeting, so that principals would have enough flexibility to meet the needs each year of the student population, knowing that the student population changes each year. The, it's my understanding that often in trades where you have schools with, through our own special needs formulas, they are, those schools are better staffed. They have a richer staffing, they have more teachers, they have more assistance, and Title I provides assistance as well, which is wonderful. Whereas, schools that don't have that type of staffing, then the challenge is to keep your class sizes where they're supposed to be, that's the staffing formula that is being suggested for next year ought to help with some of this, but I know often when the trades are suggested, often in September, it is to meet unusual student needs, either because class sizes are too large. Sometimes you have children with unusual needs, and I know that we are, our own staff has raised concerns, particularly at the elementary level, of some of our children who are in their neighborhood school where they should be, but the needs seem to be increasing. And I know sometimes that's where some of the trades are coming for either to decrease class size or an IA, or an extra educator to help with a child. And sometimes that comes outside of an IEP, but it just is because of what is needed. I also, I believe that before a trade can be approved, I believe the regional assistant superintendent has to approve that. In other words, the school and the principal, and I can think Dr. Ivey could probably weigh in on that, that there is, there is a particular approval so that the trade is not taking unfair advantage, and that the trade has to be proven to meet a specific need on the ground for the children in that school that year. Is that correct, Dr. Ivey?
That is correct. The regions sign off after all the other folks have weighed in, and actually, each region keeps a tally of ins and outs and also monitors the enrollment.
Exactly, and what the trades are being used for. In other words, what is the goal for the children who are going to be assisted by that additional staff person?
That's correct.
Thanks. Before we got started, our wonderful staff had reminded us that if we are going to do next steps, either for here or the next work session, to please begin with, I am going to start with the next step so that they understand that they are starting to record a next step, so that we're not sort of coming in behind, was that a next step, and then we start out all over again. So, thanks.
Excellent direction there, Ms. Strauss. I was thinking the same thing with 12 voices and lots of ideas, and then you never know which one's supposed to be immortalized into the next step list. All right, so I have Ms. Karen Kies-Gamara, and no one else has indicated a desire to speak that I have on my list yet.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thank you, Janie, for the history. I want to start by talking a little bit about value for value, and I think when I was reading this, it did, I'm not sure whether what we're trading out is typically equaling what we're trading in and how we handle that, so if I can get an explanation as to how that is dealt with. I am concerned about, I believe I read in here, and I read it online before I had the papers, the repetitive trades. At least in one instance, there were repetitive trades for the same thing at the same school for a number of years. I believe it was nine years. And how are we going to handle that? Because that's obviously not a trade issue anymore. That's something else that, and so, why, when do we adjust for the reality that has become clear? I also have a question regarding whether, and I didn't, wasn't able to tell from these numbers, but whether there's variance of what the trades are depending on region or pyramid, or, you know, whether it's a school that has a high special education population or variations like that. We're not able to tell from these numbers, at least I didn't notice, whether there is some variation as a result of that. So, I'll stop there, and if I can keep my minute and a half, and then?
1:31.
Oh, thank you.
You have one more second, huh?
Okay, all right. I'll start.
Should I? Okay, maybe I can comment on some, and if, Lee, you have some comments, please chime in. So, value for value, I just want to make sure I understand your question. Is it because, like, for example, we trade in for a position and trade out for a position, and you want to understand if it's the same amount that we trade in and out? Sorry.
I think what I was looking at, as I recall, and I can't find it, of course, because I'm looking for it, but I think there was trades, for example, textbooks and that sort of thing, and they seemed to be a variance with respect to the value of what was being traded as opposed to what?
Okay, maybe you are referring to position and non-position trades?
Yes, and this was actually brought up during the Audit Committee, and I'll, I'm going to definitely weigh in on where you're going with this. So, Ms. Ko, specifically, we talked at this at length at the Audit Committee meeting, when nonpositions are traded out for materials, supplies, whatever, and then it's to get a position in, positions cost not just salary, but the total benefits and compensation, including pension, healthcare, and that's not how it gets deducted for the principals who are making the trades. So, a $50,000 trade out of materials, but then they want to trade in a new teacher position? Well, that new teacher position actually costs to the budget and the system about $75,000 when you add in the total compensation, and that throws our budgeting off, and it's also a transparency piece, which is captured in the report. So, I'm glad Ms. Kies-Gamara is spotlighting it because that's where I'm going next. I don't think we've spotlighted and really talked about that.
So, it is included in the summary, and we included that as one of the observation. And then, so we highlighted the fact that we identified there are instances, like Megan mentioned, is that where a non-position, right, that it doesn't tag with the benefits caused with it, and then trade into a position, but is only at the salary level. So, we noted that, and the reason why we did not call it as a finding, because people do have different perceptions between finding and an observation, is because we looked at the overall trading and trade-out for personnel, they are pretty much the same number, so we anticipated that the difference would not be too big. That's number one. And number two is, we actually looked at the details, because in order to do this analysis, to find out is actually what is the gap, right, between the non-position money and position money, you need to go through trade by trade. So, my team actually tried to do it, and just being candid with you all, with the manual, current manual process is manual. So, it's very time-consuming to do it, and because without really knowing how much we are talking about, we cannot really say is a important issue or not an important issue, and that's why for now we have called it as an observation.
Well, I think I wanted to say as a next step, then, to where we have trades involving, for example, textbooks for a position where there is likely to be a greater inequity, I'm wondering if perhaps we could focus on that. Would that be a bit less cumbersome as opposed? Would that be a bit less cumbersome, as opposed to, in general?
We will need to work with our budget colleague, and I know that now is the budget timing, so I, we can put it as a next step, but we may need a little bit more flexibility with the time to come back.
That's fine, and I'll, you know, I'm on the Audit Committee, so you can always come back and say, Karen, that's just not feasible. I'm also, as a next step, wondering if you've noted variances in trades per region, or depending on the needs of that particular school, if there is a consistency. I'm concerned about what Ms. Heinz brought up with respect to, for example, in some of our affluent areas, if they're engaged in a particular type that allows the kind of inequities that we would be concerned about. And then, the other concern I have is with respect to, are we, how we monitor, for example, we received complaints regarding staffing, my time is running out, regarding staffing, for example, for the Ts, right? And so, if we're trading those, are we also making sure that our staff members have appropriate breaks and things of that nature?
As far as your analysis by region, I do have the information, so that is something that we will be able to provide to you, so I can provide that to you.
Okay, Ms. Kies-Guomara, anything else?
What's my time?
All right. Well, all right, so, before I go, as the Audit Chair, is there anyone else who wanted to weigh in? Okay, I'll take my turn. So, building off of what Ms. Kies-Guomara said, first of all, Ms. Coe, I completely appreciate that until we automate the system, doing something where it's manual and paper-related to do the deeper dive on the tracking of nonpositions traded out to positions coming in, we'll need to get that automated in first. So, I do want to make sure, before we leave this meeting, there is confirmation that that is happening, number one, and number two, because I did hear Ms. Burton say they agree with the recommendations, but I just want that, for the record, and number two, how long is that going to take? Building on that, until we get the automated system in, I would suggest to my colleagues in working with Dr. Braybrand and his leadership team, why we couldn't, in the interim, say to our principals, while we're going to do this automated, the bottom line is, we're recognizing that you're not doing equal trades. And so, we are trying to go to exactly what Ms. Heinz said, and what I saw, even in my lived experience as a parent at a small school that didn't have a big old PTA fund, that across the county, where there were fabulously generous parents, raising hundreds of thousands of dollars for a PTA 15 years ago, they could provide the material needs for the principal, and the principal was then buying a full-time advanced academic teacher. But our school didn't have the funding, we didn't have the PTA support, and that is definitely not equity. So, that was just my school. Now, consider some of, where we have deep, deep pockets of poverty, and I know we do need to be staffing and all those things, but the bottom line is, I think we need to get a better handle on this, because what you essentially can have sometimes is, public schools are funded with public dollars, but then parents in affluent areas can layer on more money, and now you've got almost a private school offering, and at some point, I think we have a responsibility to say, where's, where's that kind of ceiling, where we say, we just can't privatize our public high schools? You know, I just think that's, that's kind of a philosophical question to be had, but you have to know that it's happening. So, yeah, I promise you, I will give you the go-back, I'm just trying to not lose my 30 seconds of time. So, anyway, so I am concerned about that, and I don't understand why in the interim, it's a very simple thing to say, you want to trade out a position, Ms. Burton's office knows how much a position costs. That's the dollar value, if a principal wants to trade it out, it's total compensation cost for that position, not $50,000 in supplies gets you a $50,000 teacher. I mean, that's, that's kind of the first step, and I don't understand why that's not in here as a direction, because otherwise, it just feels like we've, we've got kind of a, a less-than-accurate tracking of what we're doing here, and I do think that being able to understand what's happening by region, and pyramid, and school will be helpful to us, because we're not having these conversations as board members, we don't know that it's happening. And I know now, I need my go-back. So, Ms. Strauss, you're next, because no one else has indicated.
Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Heinz, others, there's an equity lens to put on this work. Obviously, a few years ago, Ms. Karen Corbett-Sanders was saying this issue was brought up. Now, we've had an awesome Auditor General do the work. What I still hear is, well, what's the equity lens? We know historically, and that's what we've already done in the budget, you all asked for, looking at the activity in the gates, so we're starting to build that, and I think we need to look at this issue of trades through that same equity lens. There are schools that do get support from PTAs, and then have more flexibility with materials fund, and your point is simply, that materials to positions, the way we're doing it now, it's a deal. It's a deal for schools, so schools that are more in a position to have that flexibility with materials. So, we'll look at that. We'll look at that, I think it is important to look at. This is the first step in doing what, what I think we've agreed to do, bring back the work, then start to put this equity lens over it, and then ask staff to come back. I think you, Ms. Heinz, already asked, could we do an additional audit, but we can start to look, even at short-term things, Mr. McLaughlin, like better accounting, even, even as we're converting to the electronic, can we, can we, can we start to manually track that higher amount sooner? And we'll take a look at it.
Great, thank you, Dr. Braybrand, and Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. Before, we had a philosophy that supported school-based management, and this was before the trades were more widely used. There was a sense of combination, large combination classes were acceptable, and if the children were seen to be achieving on grade level, combination classes of 3, 4, 4, 5, 5, 6 were far more common, and those classes would have been anywhere from 29 to 35 or 36. And that's no longer acceptable. I know the parents in Drainsville will not accept that, and I agree with them. And it's no longer acceptable, a lot of it is because all of our children are in the neighborhood schools, and when we look at equity lens, it is also equity for each individual child who is in that classroom. So, I think that that is an issue to be considered when we look at whether trades are fair or not. And, and again, it's what are, what are principals trying to cover at a school at a time? We also have situations where sometimes a trade will occur, not necessarily driven by an IEP, but a child has exceptional needs, and if we're going to keep that child well-educated in a classroom, there's going to need extra hands. I see quite a bit of that. Yes, Dr. Ivy, I was going to say, because you know how that goes.
I just want to add that I think it's important, as we analyze the trades and the numbers, that we also look at the stories behind them.
Exactly.
And the circumstances, and I think you're right, in some cases, some trades are made because of the wanting to support special education students in a, in a more inclusive environment.
Exactly.
In some cases, trades are made, and the decision is made to, to keep a class a little larger because of the teacher, and the exceptionalness, and the popularity of the, and the quality of that teacher, and perhaps trade to have an instructional assistant go in. I think depending on the time, to support that class, depending on the time of the year, we look at the availability of staff, and we want to do, of course, we want as many teachers as we can, qualified teachers, but we also know there is a shortage, and we have to look at that. And so, there are just many, many reasons, and each principal is really trying to analyze what's the best way they can support their, their students and, and school community.
Right, but I would like to repeat that I know that the parents in my district will not support large combination classes. They would much rather trade in order to get a reasonable class size, and without combination classes.
And I think that's used very rarely these days. I was more popular in the past.
Exactly, and a lot of the trading avoids that.
Pardon me. Okay. So, we'll definitely can look at that.
Right, thank you.
All right, I have Ms. Kies-Guomara, but I did want to just make some clarity here, because I feel like we're using interchangeable terms, and they're not. We have a staffing reserve for what exactly Ms. Strauss is talking about. Staffing reserve is when we don't want to see combination classes, and I am very much in, in your mindset, that I don't think combination classes are really at the best interest. That can be addressed, that's why the board sets aside tens of millions of dollars every year to address exactly what Ms. Strauss said. The trades is different. The trades is beyond that, and that's the part that I feel like we're having a robust conversation, so I don't want to conflate the two, because, Ms. Strauss, you're right, and no one wants to see anyone in Drainsville, or anyone else in the district, having to contend with combination classes because of how our staffing formulas work, but that's why the staffing reserve was set up. So, Ms. Kies-Guomara, your turn?
Well, I think you were going where I was going, and really, this is about a sense of fidelity, because no matter, I'm all over the county, you hear people that are concerned, and there is a perception that other areas, one area may be getting something that another area is, is not getting. I'm not saying that's accurate, but I do think the more transparent we are in this process, we can deal with those perceptions. And so, and that's why I welcome this analysis, I hope that we go further, certainly don't want to create the kinds of things that Ms. Strauss described, but if we can put the information out there, and people can see that we are examining these issues, and that the level of accountability that we would expect as a board is there, that is always a concern, as Dr. Braybrand knows, we've had repeated conversations about that. That's really what this is, this is about, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Ms. Kies-Guomara. I'm going to take my go-back unless another colleague wanted to speak, but the reason I wanted to go back is because, for my next step, I would like to ask the Auditor General's office to report, and report back to the Audit Committee in whatever we deem reasonable, because we're wrapping up a school year, but maybe they report back in the first semester of the new school year, that we want to know, what are we looking at in terms of the trading out of non-staffing positions to get staffing positions, and tracking the dollar value impact? Are we now doing, to Ms. Kies-Guomara and others' points, transparency of saying, you wanted to trade out $50,000, you're going to need to bring $75,000 to the table to do that, because that's what it's costing the system to do it? And I just, I don't want it just left as, you made it as an observation, I understand the reasons why it had to be an observation versus a finding, but the board has the ability to say, well, this matters, this does, this does create inequities, and so, I, I support what Ms. Strauss said, I want our principals to have the flexibility, and Ms., or Dr. Ivy said the same thing, they're trying to meet the needs of the students in their school, and no one's discounting that, but we have to make sure that there is still inequity that if a school community knows they can get their, their material funds paid for by parent support groups, they get to trade out $50,000 and actually yield a $75,000 purchase. That's, that's where my concern is. And then, the other thing, in terms of where we're going with all of this, is, I don't know how many on the board are aware of this, I just learned about it, but apparently, we have a new position, different from SOSAs, our Systems and Support Advisors, and they're called Deans of Students. And apparently, there's about 10 of them across our 25 high schools. And I bring this up because I've been on this board seven and a half years, I was not aware that our school division created a Dean of Students. I don't really understand the difference between a Dean of Student versus a Sosa, because when someone tried to explain to me, the Dean of Student sounds similar, too, but meanwhile, we can't fund school nurses, because we don't have the money, but principals are trading in and being able to get a Dean of Students. And our principals, vast majority of them were classroom teachers, they might have been a counselor, and they're excellent managers, and that's why we train them to be leaders in their school, but they're not HR experts. And if there, these positions are being created, the board should be told about it, created by whom, done in what way? If they're essential, then Dr. Braybrand needs to come and say, we need 25 Deans of Students for our 25 high schools. So, that's, to me, just in wrapping up, another example, Dr. Braybrand, of principal autonomy is important, but they also need to understand, there's a reason we have an Assistant Superintendent of HR, there's a reason that you have a Superintendent of Schools and a School Board, to make sure that when we're creating positions, they're being created with, you know, research and best practice.
If I could, if I could wrap up a comment about that, I think this is where we need to head in the, we're heading there. The conversations are drifting there. We have had a very strong commitment to flexibility in our system for years. We now need to marry that. It's not eliminating necessarily flexibility, there are places where it's critical, and ways we need to uncover and make sure we fully understand, but we need to merge that same commitment to flexibility we've had in the system. I mean, it's baked in our system with a commitment to equity. If you can marry and blend both...
And accountability.
And accountability, you're really going to have something. So, the flexibility structures have been there, and you're getting the report out on what, what exists, and now we need to do that deeper trend analysis that several board members have talked about, put the equity lens on it, and add equity and accountability to it. And I think our conversations are merging that way across all kinds of different things. This is another example, I'll just be honest, of manual data collection that needs to move to electronic, on something too critical to be handing around pieces of paper. Not only is it inefficient, it doesn't allow for the kind of real-time analysis that we need. So, I absolutely agree, and I think we're going to move forward to take the conversation to the next level, as you've mentioned in the next step.
Great, thank you so much, Dr. Braybrand. So, in keeping with time, we, Ms. Coe, if you want to close out, and then we'll pull up the next steps.
Yeah, Megan, I think that you mentioned about the next step, about working, getting more details behind the position to non-position, or vice versa, we can certainly do that. If I may suggest, in order to make it more workable with us, that we can definitely bring it back to the Audit Committee about what we are going to look at specifically and a timeline, so that, that we can all, like, hold accountable, and then be able to get that done within a reasonable timeframe. So, does it make sense?
Excellent, yes, thank you.
And then, the staffing reserve that, Janie, you brought up, I actually, independently, together with Danell, attended some of the staffing reserve discussion about some of the specific needs of the DSS students. So, we validated that, I mean, as a matter of transparency, to let you all know, we were sitting, just observing the discussion, and it's very robust, and it really talks about the various student needs, and then budget chiming, and H.O. chiming, to find the best kind of mix for the schools. So, I just want to validate that for you all.
Wonderful, okay, if we could pull up the next steps? It's slightly larger. So, it happens when you're older than 50. Try to read that. Okay, so, Ms. Kies-Guomara, you have your, the first two next steps, if you could read them, and see if they reflect what you were wanting to capture.
But is, may I just ask, is it one is the three? Because one, if I understand, Karen, you are asking to look at the position to non-position, and is it, that's what we are going to look at for number three?
I think one and three, Karen, you weigh in here, because it was yours, they kind of, they need to be blended, because it's almost, like, mine gives the details of maybe what to start with, but then Karen's is to the, the challenge of not, of showing whether or not it's been an equal trade or not.
I have no objection to it. I mean, for me, it's about transparency and accountability. No objection to it, I mean, for me, it's about transparency and accountability, and we have to come back to the audit committee anyway, so.
Esther, if this helps you, and you know, I know for yourself, but sitting here through these next steps, one is almost that vision statement, and three is the operational thing that's being asked to do. And so, it's a blend, I mean, I don't think one cancels three, one is just a broad, get that analysis of the trades, and three is the specifics, report back with those numbers, and in reporting of the numbers, you can provide analysis around the valuing piece.
Yeah. So, for number one and three, we will be reporting back to the audit committee, and then two, definitely, we can share that out with the full school board, like the trades by region.
Okay, yes, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I was trying to take notes, and one of the other areas was information on the impact of trades of materials for staffing, and then, the local boosters backfilling.
Yeah, oh, so I understand what you're saying, because that was what Ms. Hines tried to capture, too.
And that was a future audit, correct?
I think I was thinking of that not as a next step, but more as a future audit, because it sounds like you have, we have to get the data more readily available, we can't do it with slips of paper, right? We need to have data.
Right, but maybe what we could do, because again, it was the audit committee, or the OAG coming to us, is I think it's worth recording it, so OAG knows that there was quite a few board members who were saying, and it could be, because we're going to create our audit plan in July, so I support Ms. Hines and Ms. Corbett Sanders saying, that may be something we want to have in consideration.
So, maybe we could do this, just put for future potential audit, analyze trade, non-position to position trades, right? And disaggregate by FRM, by school FRM, so.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Okay.
As well as it'll be capturing additional booster and PTA funds that are being provided to the schools, because you might end up seeing, you know, what's being purchased in excess of their funding is because they're also getting an influx of high-dollar support from the boosters.
Yeah, I guess, I was going to use FRM as kind of a shorthand for that, because I don't know, the rest of that analysis, go school by school for booster funds, and see how much of those booster funds are used for what? My question is just, if we've got a relatively affluent school community, are they using that affluence to buy teachers, basically, is what we're worried about, right, which they're not actually technically allowed to do? So, I mean, I guess I'm assuming that the FRM status would capture all the ways in which that community, the PTA, the boosters, all of it, is going to be more wealthy, but...
Well, I guess, yeah, I wouldn't, I was hearing you say about FRM status, the only concern I have is, so for all of our non-FRM schools, does staff understand that that's what we're trying to do as a cross reference?
Well, no, what I'm saying, every school has an FRM percentage.
Yeah.
If it's 5% or 95%.
Okay, so you just want to run it, okay.
Yeah.
I understand. Sorry, Ms. Kiesgumara?
Well, I'm not sure this fits with her, Ms. Hines's statement, but I, as the Title I liaison, I have heard of principals utilizing the PTA for funding, and so, I don't think it's just affluent schools that we need to identify, but those PTAs, at least in a few instances I've heard, the principals are essentially taking command of whatever funds come through the PTA, and that is, is... They're directing the PTA funds, and that is another side of the coin with respect to equity that I'm concerned about. I'm not sure whether, I don't want to...
Well, I'm just not sure if it can be captured in this kind of audit, I think that might be a different question, only because parents, PTAs are allowed to fund everything but positions, is my understanding. So, I don't know that we can have, I don't know that we can have the OAG discover whether at this school, the PTA independently chose to fund copy paper, or whatever it was, but at this school, they were directed by the principal to do that, you know what I mean?
Oh, I think you can't necessarily, and I don't think, Ms. Kiesgumara was saying, we'll discern whether, what was done with guidance and intent, I think it's just what's the outcome. If we start to see that schools where there's higher affluence, there's higher numbers of trades, and higher trading out of materials, and then, there's also a higher incoming of funds coming from the PTAs, because they're still able to purchase all their materials, they're just trading out the materials but still getting the materials.
Again, I think the point is, we're not auditing the PTA and booster funds, this is just about identifying what those funds are in a separate from, I mean, what that number four is, in addition to our analysis of the trades by each school's FRM.
Right.
I offer then a suggestion, that instead of using the term "capture," that you actually use the term "identify additional PTA and booster funds provided to the schools that may supplement materials traded out."
Identify additional PTA and booster funds provided to schools, so are we asking then for all 190 schools for the chart, I'm just asking, to also include PTA funds at that school and booster funds at that school?
No, all I'm saying is that if they have significant trading out, that is that, are those funds that come in supplementing to pay for the same materials?
I would make it less complicated, I think if you're creating a chart, that's just one of your columns, is going to be how much trading out went in, how much trading in happened, and then, what was the dollars coming in from the boosters to the principal's operating fund? I mean, that...
I just didn't like the term "capture," because it sounded like we were going to keep it, and we're not doing anything with PTA funds.
No, no, I totally agree with identifying, but I would take out the word "additional," the bottom line is, we want to identify what PTA and booster funds are provided to the school's operating expenses.
So, I'll tell you what, my thought is, we can send this to the audit committee.
Yeah, we can work it out.
To work with the auditor general to scope this, maybe.
Excellent, I think that sounds great. The next step that I needed to have better categorized it as, here's the next step to consider, is I would like, in light of the example I gave, is to have Dr. Braybrand report back to the board, what is the Dean of Students position? How many schools have it? Why do they have it? And are there plans to have these across all 25 schools from an equity perspective?
And it's not just high schools, it's middle schools.
They have Deans of Students, too? Okay. So, high schools and middle schools. And please include in there, Dr. Braybrand, if you can, you know, maybe the HR department did create this position in concert with the principals, and it's been well flushed out, but I do think that it's, in light of the board's commitment of the Sosa program, I think we need to have a better understanding of how these two serve different purposes and why.
We can get that. Mr. Smith, did you want to say something in the moment, but we can do follow-up if...
So, there is no position that we have classified as a Dean of Student, there is no position code for Dean of Student, it's merely a teacher position that's being traded out to use for other, it can be traded to create a Dean of Position Student, or a Dean of Student position that is used to focus on attendance issues, primarily attendance issues in many of our high schools, but again, that's not a position that we have in Fairfax County, it's merely a teacher position, and the principals have entailed it, Dean of Student, so that it carries some weight within schools when they're working with students and working with families.
We'll follow up and get the information you've requested.
So, I just appreciate what Mr. Smith said, it further reinforces where my concern is, which is, we've got a teacher position that's been categorized as something that, who was the HR professional who fleshed out this job? That we know that we're hiring with credentials to do the job, the purpose of the job, I mean, just people getting creative with positions, it's one thing to give principals autonomy to say, this is what I need, it's another thing to say, let's just create a position that we think would be a good idea.
We'll follow up and get your context.
Thank you.
And with that, we are going to go into closed session. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss and consider personnel matters, specifically the performance to motion, discipline, and salaries of specific public officers and specific public employees pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A, 1 of the Code of Virginia. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. Darrenath Kofax, seconded by Mr. Moon, all those in favor, that motion is unanimous, with Mr. Wilson and Ms. Schultz not at the table or in...